Bruce Wise, how are you?
I'm doing great. How are you?
I'm doing well, man. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Somebody told me that traffic was really bad coming that direction today. Did they get that accident cleared up?
I didn't see it.
Okay, wonderful. So zipped on through from Star. God bless it. So look, you're running for Star City Council.
I am.
You have deep roots in Star. Awesome. Why are you running for City Council, my guy?
Well, first of all, I'd have to say it's a calling. Jesus calls us to serve. So that's a big thing for me. I lived, worked, had a, had a business in Star. I was blessed to be able to retire at 55. Just a remarkable story if, if I ever get a chance to tell all the ups and downs of my lifetime. But you know, once I retired, I thought, you know what? That's when I turned to give back. And my, my wife and I, both of us, gosh, I feel like I'm kinda, yeah, a little emotional for some reason. But anyway, um, my wife and I, uh, we, we just, we volunteer everywhere. I mean, we're Chamber of Commerce, we're at the parade, we're at church, at, at church volunteering. We're, uh, we're a big part, my, my wife is actually the vice president of the food bank. And so we do that. Um, just, you know, this is our time to give back. I have been going to city council meetings for years, um, never thought about running, but I just like to be in the know. And I've gotten to know all the sitting council members, so they know me. I'm one of the few that show up. It's always like, uh, you know, unless, unless it's a big, yeah, unless it's a big controversial development or something going on, it's me and a half a dozen other people and, you know, and the, and the developers that are going over the properties and all that type of thing like they do. But, um, yeah, just, I mean, uh, I want to give back. I feel like I'm a good candidate. I know the city council members, they know me. Um, I've had lots of people say, you should do it. I kinda waited till the last minute to get in, but, but, uh, we're, we're getting up and rolling now. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's, that's the biggest part of it anyway. Yeah.
You know, uh, there, I, as a younger man, I had this idea of retiring early. And you know, I think whenever you're like in your twenties, like I'm gonna retire early. It's gonna be great. And, and somebody told me when I was in my early thirties, they're like, this guy had made a lot of money and he had done the whole retire early thing at like 40 or something. And he was back working and he was like, you really don't understand, like retirement's not the answer. It's relevance and contribution. That's what you really want. And it's like, yeah, you want to take a break. Sure, man. Take a vacation, like take a beat. But what you really want when you wake up is to feel like people are depending on you to continue helping.
Right.
And, and, and that really stuck with me and I've had brief periods of my life where I've, uh, felt like I didn't have relevance or felt like, like if I get out of bed or I don't get out of bed, nobody really cares because nobody's depending on me. And man, that's a, that's a thing, you know, so you gotta get, you gotta get engaged. So to that end, there's a lot going on in Star. You got a lot of growth. You got a lot of things happening.
Well, I have news, I already go back to work, by the way. I, I will.
Full-time work. Yeah.
Right. I will, I would, I volunteer like crazy.
Yeah, right.
I'm very active. So, um, go on.
I, I, no, you're good. You're good.
So I just wanted, I just want to interject and say that I, I'm not one of those guys.
Bruce is not applying for any job.
I'm, yeah, I'm not one of those guys that's, uh, lives to work, um, you know, so, uh, but I do, uh, care deeply. And, and when I, when I get involved with something, it's, it's all the way.
Yep. Star has some interesting problems.
They do.
Star has pretty much doubled in size in the last five years. Uh, that's a huge consideration. Star has services that it can't really, the city, city proper can't really directly affect, but everybody relies on. That's left up to the citizenry. Um, talk to me about these things. First, talk to me about growth, right? Everybody says like, oh, I'm gonna do something about growth and what do you think?
Well, it's, it's complicated. Yeah. Like you say, I mean, there's, you know, traffic is not a lot we can do, except maybe put some pressure on, on, uh, ACHD and ITD and, and try to get them to, uh, get some things done. Love our mayor and he, he does a great job. I know he's, uh, pushed up a lot of, uh, of the growth instruction ahead of time. That's one aspect, but not a lot we can do there. You know, school's not a lot we can do there. Cause that's Ada County School District that controls that. As a city council member, you know, the things we can do, um, is control it.
In what way?
Well, control the growth.
Come back to my school for a little, there you go, there you go.
Control the growth, um, uh, in a sense that, uh, businesses that come in, we can, we can control that to some degree. How dense the, the housing is, we can control that to some degree. That's when I keep going back and forth and we talks about, you know, we don't want high density housing. And then I think to myself, uh, you know, that's, that's great, but, but if you only have very expensive houses in your town, there's no diversity there.
Right. What's the 18-year-old graduating from high school that grew up in Star going to do? Like just buy the 4,000 square feet on five acres? Like that's not, not on your Winco job, buddy.
Exactly, exactly. So, so that's, you know, that's, that's the thing I, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do some high dance, density stuff, we can, uh, figure out where to place it. So it's not, you know, necessarily right in our faces. Um, maybe, I don't know, maybe duplexes, maybe, you know, there's some things that we could do that, that are gonna to, um, did it again and I, uh, you know, it's gonna accomplish what we want, but, but, uh, you know, not make Star a place that, uh, only wealthy people can live.
Right. And what should that target be? When you say it should accomplish what we want, what is it that Star should want? Or what is it that you want for Star?
The simplest way I can put is we want Star to be Star. I mean, I was, I was over at the Merc last night and, and I know everybody at the Merc and I love that. You know, I can walk in and, you know, say hello to all the people that work there and they know who I am and I know who they are. But one of the gals says, yeah, you know, I said, I'm running for city council, you know, and all that's great. You got my vote and, and she says, we just want Star to be Star. We don't want Star to, to, to look like Meridian or, or, you know, where it's, it's malls and, and, and box, uh, company, box businesses and big box stores and, you know, and.
So no in and out in Star.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, you know, I was, I was against McDonald's coming to Star. Yeah. But then what they did with the, I think the architectural committee kinda made them make their building not look like a gaudy, you know, red and yellow big sign. It looks, you know, it's, it's, it's like a charcoal gray on the outside with wood framing and it, and it looks actually nice. So it's like, you know, and that's the type of thing that the city council can do, you know? I hear people say, yeah, I want, I want an in and out. We've got a Taco Bell coming. Hopefully they do the same and, and not make it, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna that look for Star. Especially right downtown. Um, yeah.
So you want start or remain start, but from a policy standpoint, like how do you, like, let's say with housing or let's say with, with things you can't control with like master plans and zonings, right? Like what do you do to keep that star feel?
Well, I think, yeah, uh, density to some degree, making sure the architecture goes with the rest of the town.
So it's really like the facades and then, you know, making sure you have, it, it sounds like you're saying, look, we really need density to maintain the population distribution, right? Cause the age population distribution, if you're only going for wealthy people, first off, you're gonna have an older population because those are generally the people with money. You're also gonna have a, a situation that's unattainable for younger families. And also obviously young people like 18 to 30, it's really hard to buy, you know, a big, single family home.
Right.
And it's also just prices out everyone because not only do you have only expensive products, but then you have a scarcity of products which, which drives up housing cost. So essentially like appropriate density where, where you can to have different levels of products.
Right. And, and another thing, you know, and I've heard, uh, our mayor say this often is that we've got to have a, a balance of, uh, business and residential. There, there's a healthy balance. Uh, usually I think it's like a 90 to 10, you know, 90 residential to 10% business. But that helps, uh, keep our property taxes down. The businesses are bringing in, you know, taxes for the city. And so we need that. Um, uh, so that's something that I'd like to continue to maintain. I don't have a lot of complaints about what we're doing now. Um, uh,
But what are the complaints about, if I may ask, in talking to people?
You know, I think, I think, uh, people think that the city council, uh, can control more than they can. Like growth, for example. Um, uh, we can't put a, uh, what do you call it?
Moratorium.
Moratorium on, on, uh, well, you can, but, but it's very difficult, uh, to put a moratorium on like, uh, permits, you know.
And it's temporary. Like you can do like a temporary emergency moratorium because you gotta upgrade the sewer system or there's something like that, but that's only six months.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be a threat to public safety, basically to do it. And it's six months and then you have to have a year off and then you can do another six months. But it's just, it's not the solution. Um, I think the only solution we have is, is to, uh, be able to manage what we can. And, and, uh, you know, we can, we can do it in a way that, that keeps Star, Star. And, and hopefully we can make everybody happy, which of course you never do, but, um, uh, yeah, I mean, that's another aspect of it.
Gotcha. Yeah. I don't spend, uh, I don't, I don't spend any time on social media. I really just go to drop off my episodes and go away, but when I do go to drop off the episodes, in, in seeing some of the posts, everyone is asking all the city council candidates about the fire station and the fire district, which kills, because you, you brought up like, people think we can do things we can't.
Right.
The city council cannot fund the fires. Oh, you can't fund fire salaries with impact fees. These are one times you can't get, you know, developers to be on the hook for, you know, funding fire salaries for a community indefinitely. Right?
Right.
And at the end of the day, the community is being asked and has been asked multiple times by Chief Tominski, who's in charge of the Star Fire District, hey, we have the impact fees for this building. The building is sitting vacant because the community has to fund the salaries of the firemen.
Right.
That you're getting the benefit of the fireman salaries, you fund the salaries, right? Like that's the way it goes. And the city council cannot do anything about that.
Right. And, and 389 prevents us from raising the budgets, uh, anymore, what 8% a year? And then our population's growing twice that speed. So yeah, that's, that's where the problem runs in. And I, and I think that, you know, I know, I know the chief, uh, the fire chief pretty well. Um, I trust him. Hopefully people are moving into Star and thinking, I don't trust government and that's why I'm gonna say no to anything, uh, any money they're asking for. Um, our chief is a super guy. I know him personally. I trust him. Um, and I think that if people, uh, are educated about, about the levy, they understand that, you know, it's, it's really not a tax hike that's gonna be result. It, it seems like it, but if you, I actually did, I wrote down some numbers because I happen, uh, to keep all my property tax bills for the last five years.
Oh my gosh, I don't know what you're gonna say, but I guarantee you, your property tax bill in 2020 is far greater than your property tax bill right now. So when people say growth should pay for growth, growth funded your property tax bill. It decreased it because of the way our taxing districts work and the growth in Star. What, tell me what the numbers are. I gotta know.
Yeah. I'm looking at, at 2020 and I, and I'm just looking at my personal tax.
Sure.
2020, uh, you know, the, the amount I paid in comparison to the value of my home was almost 1%. 2021, it's point 67. 2022, it's point 51. 2023, it's point 51. 2024, it's point 45. So less than a half a percent. Um, huge decrease in taxes over the last five years.
And just not, without getting into gross numbers, that, so you're giving percent. So you, you essentially got cut in half from a percentage standpoint. But even with that, the gross number got, would you say got cut in half or close to it? Or like 40%?
I would say like it's still 60, 70%.
Great. So you had a 30 to 40% reduction in property tax.
Yeah. And, and your, any value of your homes are going up too. So you gotta keep that in mind. It's all, it's all based on the value of your home.
Right.
But you know, part of the thing too is I said, okay, you know, they gave us a, a calculation of how much, uh, this is gonna increase our taxes if we, if we pass this levy. And I look at it and we're still gonna be about, yeah, we're still gonna be at like point 5 and nowhere near where we were in 2020.
A buddy of mine who recently moved to Star hit me up and said, hey, look, can you explain this to me? And I said, all right, look, you, you really gotta factor in, it's like, this is how taxing work. And by the way, there are people moving into Star from the, my former state that absolutely do not understand why, how you could possibly have a doubling in population and be not doubling, like money should be raining from the sky because in my former state, if you have 10 houses, you get 10 houses worth of property taxes. Let's say each property tax bill is 10 grand, not uncommon there. Okay. 10,000, so you get a hundred thousand dollars. If you get an 11th house, they're like, hey, man, that's another $10,000. Done and done. So the budget, the money accumulated from the property tax goes from a hundred thousand to 210,000 and it just goes up, 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 up as you, so in Star, people are like, you just doubled the number of houses. You should have double the budget. It's like, that's not what happens. And that money never goes through the city. And this is the taxing district part. There are plenty of people that I've, I've heard from or spoken to that had bad experiences in other states because they said, look, I was part of police, I was part of fire, I was part of emergency services. And the city would run tax hikes off our backs by saying, we need more money for firefighters or we need more money for law enforcement or ambulance services. And the citizenry was like, dude, I don't want more taxes, but like, yeah, I want the firemen to show up. So they would agree to the tax hike. That money then went into the city's general budget. And the fire or the police did not get a raise. That is not what happens in Idaho. In the far, Star Fire District, you have a taxing district where the money never goes through the city. The money gets collected and then distributed right down to the district. But the, the bottom line is, well, like, why don't you explain? I don't need to explain all this. Like why, why, why is it that property tax has gone down as the population has gone up? And that's a problem for, for the fire.
Right. So, so it's the same number and you're just dividing that, that number that we have to accumulate to, to, uh, keep our firehouses going. Um, it just gets split up by more people, uh, as the population grows. So yeah, um, exactly. It's not every time a house is built, uh, you know, you're getting more taxes. But you know, and I think part of the problem too is that, you know, it's $2.1 million levy and, uh, increase and people are freaking about the month, the, the number seems huge, but it really isn't, you know? And, and it doesn't increase each and of our taxes that much. Um, and we need it. I mean, there's a lot of people retiring in Star and those are the people that need the EMS services. And, and you know, it's not, it's not, we, not that we got fires going on everywhere, but you know, it's the emergency medical that, that's really what we need.
And by the way, when there is a fire, you really want Star Fire. I had a, there was a fire just like a month ago and I was watching the flames on the foothills marching towards my house. And I was like, oh my God, from like, from my front yard, I turned on the sprinklers, like they were gonna do something if the fire gets there. I did run up on my roof and make sure there weren't pine needles in my gutters, right? Like good job, Matt. But you know, like you see that, you see that playing out and there is nothing that can prepare you for seeing your kids and wife in a car, all hysterical, leaving because they think the house is about to burn down. Dude, seeing the things that my kids grabbed. I have a nine-year-old. I have an 11, like seeing what the 11-year-old grabbed because he thought the house was gonna burn to the ground and seeing what he valued. Like he took a picture off his wall of all the things in his room. He like grabbed this picture and was like shoving it into this backpack. And you know, again, like you see that, everybody's driving away and then you see the trucks driving towards the fire and you're like, God bless you guys. Like, oh my God. And you know, luckily my house didn't burn down. Thank God. They, and they, they went after it. But it is one of those things where until you have that experience, it, it's like, take my money. And again, I don't live in Star. I'm not, I'm not telling people Star what to do. I'm just saying for me in my area, I was like, holy cow. Thank God bless the Eagle Fire District. Thank God for them. Yeah. It was a, it was intense. Anyway, so that's, this, we're kind of off because this is something, the point is you can't, city council can't even affect this. This is the P, this is the population of Star and they will, they will decide what they want for themselves.
Yeah. But I'm an advocate for the, the fire department, the levy, the, the whole thing. I mean, I had a sign in my yard, you know, about the lev, vote yes for the levy. Cause it's, it's really a no-brainer, but I think people don't, uh, don't understand it. Otherwise I don't see why, you know, yes, your taxes are going up from last year. But when you look at it, it looked the big picture, really you're still paying much lower taxes than what you did five years ago.
You know what I think one of the problems is? Because Star has doubled in the last five years, that necessarily, that de facto proves, or excuse me, that shows that the majority of people, or at least half the people, weren't there five years ago.
Wow.
So that over half the people didn't experience this huge drop in property tax. So if I show up today and they're like, hey, would you like to increase the lev, your property taxes for fire? I'm like, no, no, I like, I moved here, I moved here, Bruce, because the property taxes were low. I'm not raising the property taxes. Like, bro, you got here 15 minutes ago. Like, you don't understand. Like this is, he's like, no, no, the government should take care of this.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like the fire district is government kind of, but whatever. Anyway, state government, state government. So you can't, you can't affect that. You can't stop growth, right? Talk to me about law enforcement though, because this is one of the emergency services that Star City Council does have control over.
You know, our, our, uh, police chief, um, has saying is, it's done a fantastic job. And like I said, I go to, I go, I go all the city council meetings and every, every month he comes in and tells us where our numbers are. And, and compared to the areas around us, uh, our numbers are always fantastic. You know, low arrest rates and, and crime and so on. I, he always talks about, uh, keeping one officer per thousand people in Star and we want to continue to do that. They talk, often they talk about, you know, people, not the chief himself, but I've, I hear other people talk about, you know, Star is a place that criminals do not want to go. That they don't have big drug problems because of our enforcement. They don't have a lot of crime because of our enforcement. We need to keep it that way. I don't think we have to change anything, but, um, that they're doing a fantastic job. They've got a, uh, you know, police dog now, which, which, you know, helps with the crime and.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Drugs and all that type of stuff and, and detectives now and, and that type of thing. So, um, I don't have a, a lot to offer as far as that goes. I think they're doing great. Um, uh, continue.
Yeah. Do you think they're sufficiently funded or do you think that they, you know, because everybody's always concerned about fiscal responsibility, right?
Seems like it. I mean, um, I haven't like, I don't really, uh, look at the budget that closely, honestly. I look at results. Um, and like I said, it's, it seems like things are going well and the, the police, that side of it. And I think I heard somebody, uh, you know, talk about, we really like to see the police out in the community more. And I see them. I, I don't know, I don't know who isn't seeing them, but you go to just about any event, the extravaganza, the, the parades, the, um, any of the events, uh, we just did a big one for the food bank. Star's great cardboard regatta. We did a cardboard boat race, kinda like they do in, they do in Caldwell. And, um, the, the police are there. Um, so you know, if you're not seeing them, I'm not sure where you are. Maybe you don't bump into them to the, in the grocery store, but, but if you go to the, any of the events, they're there. They also have a, a police officer that's, uh, in the schools, um, pretty much full-time, I think. And then when school's out, they put them out at the parks. So, um, no, I think, I think our, our police force is awesome. Not something I'm terribly concerned about.
Gotcha. Yeah. When we talk about, again, uh, coming back to, uh, growth and businesses, there are a lot of places that are concerned about promoting growth, uh, economic growth, right? Because there, there are real problems with becoming a very predominantly bedroom community. You know, your revenue for the city starts relying on permits and things of that nature. And that's all well and fine when things are going gangbusters. Um, not that great when things stop. So you obviously have to have the taxing base from, you know, commercial and, and, uh, you know, industry and things of that nature. What, what can be done in Star to continue promoting businesses and economic growth and commercial growth within the city? To keep increasing tax receipts?
Well, I mean, I think people want to be there right now, just because.
You keep, you keep, you're going like this.
No, you told me to relax.
You get relaxed, just stop moving away.
No, I, I think people, I mean, right now everyone wants to go to Star. It's, it's such a great community. I don't think we have any problem with, uh, you know, continuing with the, the commercial growth. But you know, we want to manage it though. Um, again, you know, I, I like the idea of maybe, you know, saying you can't have anything bigger than two stories or, or making sure that the, the architectural, uh, part of it, keeps Star looking like Star. Uh, we love the small time town look and the feel of it. You know, not get the big box stores and not get the chain, uh, restaurants and, um, even though no one's coming. But yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, we gotta keep that balance and all that's, that's the thing. I think we need to, I just kinda, something popped in my mind, like, you know, we, we need to keep trying to annex more property. Again, that, that will help, uh, spread out our growth a little bit more. I know a lot of people want to be part of Star, so I don't think it's gonna be a huge problem. But to continue to, uh, annex more, more property into the city of Star.
Are you worried about losing ag bases as you, ag tax bases, you start annexing ag land?
Yeah, you know, and that's, that's another thing is, there's a balance there, you know? How, how can we, um, uh, get some of our ags to agricultural, uh, you know, people that, to stay, stay put. But at the same time, you know, I, I hear people say that, you know, that, you know, the kids don't want to stay on the farm anymore. And you know, the, the people that, that have farms are, you know, like, what am I gonna do? I want to retire. My, my children don't want it. Uh, here's this developer, you know? Here's my, there's my retirement. Um, so it's, you know, it's hard to blame them. But you know, that's, that's just, uh, a sad, realistic, you know?
Reality.
Reality of, of the, of the situation.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And I always feel like, uh, when it comes to agriculture, I mean, with, as the technology continues to grow, we probably need less of it as well because we can produce so much more than we used to. But then the population's growing. So there you, there you go, you know?
Does Star have an urban renewal district? I don't think you guys do.
I don't, yeah, that doesn't sound familiar.
Is that something that you think would be valuable, uh, to utilize?
Explain it to me.
Oh, sure. So urban renewal district is essentially, you have a designated area where you're like, all right, look, wouldn't it be great if we had X type of development, be it commercial or industrial or residential? In this target area, the problem is like the sewer lines, utilities are all really like old. Gosh, this is what we should do. We should make an urban renewal district where we can aggregate funds as, as a taxing district that get directly reinvested to improve the infrastructure and desirability of that area. And that makes fertile earth. So then a company was like, man, I've always wanted to develop in that area. I've always wanted to build a factory or I've always wanted to build a restaurant or I've always wanted to build a small housing development in this area. But the problem has always been these underlying infrastructure problems, either the street or the pipes or something like that. But now they're investing that and they fixed that. Now the project pencils out and it makes sense. And then the businesses or developers or whatever come in, that increases the tax base because there has been that investment. So it's this temporary, um, taxing aggregation that goes directly to improving infrastructure and areas. And then that area develops, the taxing district goes away after a certain time it sunsets. And then all of that revenue then gets shared with, with the community because now it got developed. So it's just a hyper-focused way of improving and the desirability of a certain area.
That sounds like a good idea.
Doesn't it? Yeah. And I don't think, again, like Garden City has one right now, just south of Chindon, I believe, in that area. A lot of places are using them. I think Caldwell and and Nampa definitely has one. And that that's going to sunset, I think, in in like six years or something. So they're working really hard to revitalize areas and attract businesses. Because again, just make the earth more fertile, make it a more desirable area and things grow out of that.
Right. I don't know if there's a whole lot in Star that isn't fairly new. You know, it seems like when I got there, you know, it was thirty-five hundred people, something like that, in two thousand and five.
It was thirty-five hundred people in two thousand and five.
Something like that.
Twenty years, you've gone from thirty-five hundred to twenty thousand or something.
Man, we're, I think we're up like twenty-one, twenty-two or something.
Twenty-four?
It's something like that.
I know. It's wild.
It's crazy. It's crazy.
I'm speaking to that. Do you, do you think that there's, you know, with like Parks and Rec and arts, you know, there, do you think that there's something, do you think that the city is doing enough to preserve Star culture and history and what makes, you know, from a rec and an arts and a culture standpoint, what makes Star star? Or do you think more could be done?
I I think more can be done. I I think our our parks and and rock is is very good, but that's, you know, something else that people have said to me is like, you know, I hate to see all these buildings that have been there forever get tore down and putting something else put up new. And I started thinking about it and I know that being part of the Star Food Bank, we're trying to find another building. We've got a nine hundred square foot building right in, right in front of City Hall. And we're servicing two thousand people a month out of that. And we've got to have storage. So anyway, we're, we're going to be moving out of there hopefully soon. Wouldn't that be cool to have a little museum, so to speak? Right there, it's right by City Hall. It's a small building. It's a historic building. I think that would be super cool. Or, you know, if that's not something that makes sense, you know, maybe some kind of, I don't know, monuments or something like that. We've got lots of park spaces. We could put some things up that would, you know, try to keep their history alive, so to speak. But, yeah, I mean, that would be something I'd be looking at. I think it's important to a lot of people and probably more to the people that have been there for a long time. But even even I am not a native, but I look back and see the old pictures of the Merc and the old fire station and that type of thing. It's kind of, it's kind of cool.
Oh, it's super cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I have an old picture of Eagle from like nineteen thirty up there. Somebody gave it to me. And it is really cool to see that stuff. And I had Mayor Chadwick in probably a year, a year and a half ago now. And it was great talking to him because he he did such a good job of articulating the distinct culture that Star offers, like, and he wanted, quick example, he's like, look, man, every duck hunting season, people freak out. And I put out, I have to put out all these PSAs, like, listen, you're going to hear gunfire. Don't call Zach Hessing, Chief Hessing. Don't dial nine one one. You know, like, you're going to see people walking around with firearms. You're going to see them walking around with guns, like, it's gonna be okay. You know, every year, more people come and they're like, oh, my God.
Yeah, I'm probably one of them shooting the guns too, but yeah, I mean, it, it's cool. Yeah. I mean, we we like that, you know.
And if you don't, like, that's fine. Just this may not be your place. Right. Like, there are plenty of places that don't allow, you know, duck hunting within the city limits. That's totally fine. Right. That's just not Star.
Right, right.
A lot of people have told me, they're like, I don't have a problem with anybody who moves to Star, you know, where these people live. I don't have a problem with anybody who moves to Star and, you know, doesn't like this. Just don't try to change it to what you like, because this is what it is. And if you don't like it and you want to be somewhere where it's exactly what you like, don't move here. It's the wrong spot.
Right, right. Yeah. One of my buddies said, you know, sometimes it's good to be a little bit of a redneck and and we we like that in Star. It's, I mean, you know, we want, we want real people, you know. And and, yeah.
So, okay, well, listen, we have talked about a lot of different things, my guy. Is there anything that we've missed? We've talked growth, zoning, you know, law enforcement, infrastructure.
Let's see here. I I made a few notes.
Take your time.
Yeah. I don't know. I I, you know, one thing I wanted to make sure that I said before I left is I I know most of the candidates that I'm up against, and I don't even call it against. I'm I'm running for a position. I'm not against anybody. But I've been fortunate because I'm not a big social media guy that I haven't been attacked like some of the other candidates have. And it's, it's a hard thing to run. People be kind. Really, it's, you put yourself out there, the time and energy these candidates are putting into it. It's, it's tough. It really is. So try to, you know, be patient. Give us a break. None of us are, you know, politicians, really. We're, we're just concerned citizens that want to do our part. So.
Man, here's to that. I, and I tell everybody that comes in here, like, first off, I don't have the guts to do it. I'm not going to do it. I I'm not the right guy. And to have the capacity to, you know, put your hat in the ring, you know, it's, it's like that old, it's the man in the arena, only he knows, right? And the, the value is not with the critic, right? It's the person who is willing to go out there and get their ass kicked and keep coming back every day. And it's just, it's so, it's so easy to see how we now, as a function of how people act towards each other, how now people are criticizing, like, why don't we have better candidates? Well, you're the reason. You're the reason we don't have the best and the brightest and not, not putting you down. But like that, when people criticize, like, these candidates are terrible, it's like, yeah, you're the reason. Like, first off, they're not as bad as you think, right? Second, could you do better? Then go do better, right? And third, if you do find somebody who you do think in, you know, quantifiable metrics is the best candidate and that person doesn't want to run because it's so terrible, you're the reason why they're not running. You know, so it's like, give some credit to the people that are giving it a shot, right? These are not career politician spots. These are people that love their communities and are trying to bring what they have to offer to public service, right? It's not like you're getting, you know, become Nancy Pelosi, four hundred million deep, serving on the Star City Council. You know, it's not, it's not like that. It's, hey, I think I have something to offer and I just, I appreciate the effort you put in and.
And criticism hurts. I mean, it does because we're not used to it. You know, if you're, if you're a seasoned politician, you probably, it just bounces off you. These guys, all of us, we're, you know, we're just regular people. We're concerned citizens. We want to help. We want to, you know, we care a lot about our community. So.
And then some jerk with a podcast asks you to come on. Some guy, just some guy. Listen, Bruce, I appreciate you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for what you're doing for Star, running. And, yeah, man, good luck with your campaign.
All right. Make the wise choice.
God bless you, sir. Had to do that. Thanks, everybody.